Do you want to get your business scene on the big screen? Have more eyes see who you are? Is your budget holding you back, keeping you from advertising your business? Maybe it's time you contacted Crossroads TV. Inexpensive 10-day campaign, pinpoint accuracy for demographics and geography, and the ability to select some or all of their partnered streaming services. Call us, (207) 453-9895.
I pledge allegiance to a flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everybody. We've been looking forward to this meeting. Just a quick reference, silence your phones. I forget a lot, so I have to remind myself and everybody. Most of us know each other, but let's just do a quick introduction. We'll go around the room. We're going to start with Chief Leary, and then we'll go right to our town manager. Just introduce yourself, and they know who you are.
Travis Leary, Fire Chief for the Fairfield Benton Emergency Services.
We're going around or to me?
Go right to me.
Oh, go to me. Okay, I was like, Michelle, Wellington Town Manager for the town of Fairfield.
Kevin Kitchen, Town Council.
Kathy Bolster, Benton Select Board.
Stephanie Thibodeau.
Robin Seer, Select Board.
Tim Martin.
Robin Dennis, Select Board, Benton.
Peter Lawrence.
Sean Dixon, Benton Select Board.
Matt Townsend, Fairfield.
All right.
Just a quick little housekeeping issue. Chad, who is running the video for tonight's meeting, has set these microphones up a little bit so that they're supposed to kind of be shared amongst people. So if you can, just kind of remember that. You don't have to worry about yours.
Benton has paying on a percentage of, average of a five-year call volume, I believe. It stayed roughly around 22 to 23%. I think right now it's sitting around 22.58% over a five-year average. There was an original clause in there that no, neither town would have greater than a 5% increase in any one year without consent of the other. We've gotten away from that for a few years, and Fairfield's been eating the costs quite a bit over that four years, mostly due to insurances and raises, union raises and salaries. So those are some of the things I'd like to discuss as we move forward. We want to make sure we're on the same page with Benton. We like our neighborly agreement. We think consolidated services are the way to keep costs down for both towns. This gives us a good opportunity to go through whatever we may have missed over the last decade, any changes that need to be made. Going to keep it pretty open. I don't want it to be a strict format. So if anybody has any questions, Michelle has some highlighted drafts in your packet on the interlocal agreement that, just basically some wording changes. I'm going to turn it over to Michelle to discuss that, and then maybe raise a hand to two addressed questions, one by one, so we don't overtalk each other. I do that a lot, so I'm going to apologize in advance. Robin, you good?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll turn it over to Michelle. Thank you.
All right, so the draft, one, you received the original, right? So the current interlocal agreement that we're operating under, and then a draft with a red line version mock-up. A lot of what in here was just things that Microsoft Word AI doesn't think should be words anymore. And that's what some of these pieces were that were in here. The biggest change happens under Section 4 Finance 4.1. This is where it talks about the distribution. And I, before we get into any conversation about this, I just want to caveat this, that this was put together strictly as a draft for conversational purposes. There's no way, shape or form means this is exactly what Benton has to agree to, that kind of thing. It was just something that, and it was a very simple change, to avoid the situation that we're currently in. And the reason for that, again, as Chairman Martin had said, it was never, Benton never increased by more than a 5% in any given year, whereas Fairfield's expenses did continue. And if you notice, the agreement was working just exactly the way it was supposed to. So another packet you had was a lot of budgetary information. The very last page of that document, of that stapled piece of, it showed that in 2021, 2022 fiscal year, Benton's appropriation was only short by $3,200. Like, we were really close to meeting it and knowing that the five-year average was going to be able to take over, and we weren't going to have to worry about it because the increases, just we're not jumping. Again, staffing changes with the contract, the need post, well, mid-pandemic, to provide wages to retain staff is really what the driving factor was with that. And you'll see that more later on in the evening when we start talking about budgets. But as you see over the years, what's happening is, is the disparity between the calls for five-year average and what Benton is paying is quite a bit different. And it, and that gap is just getting larger. So how do we get to a point where we get back to the point where it's the fair share that it needs to be for both of our communities? So again, that was, that was the only real change in here. There's a couple of notes that I did put in the document. One, Section 5.3 Disposition of Property. One, I need to make sure that that section agrees with what our policy actually is. I think it does. But I wasn't sure if Benton had a particular policy that you had. I know that, I don't believe at this point in time we own anything that particularly just belongs to the town of Benton. But I just wanted to draw everybody's attention to that section, so to make sure if we need anything. And then I think there's just one other note. Oh, notices, talks about the fact that both, the parties, it must be mailed, first class postage prepaid mail directly to the party. And I just was looking to do, adding a provision that we could do electronic delivery of documentation.
Yes.
Right? I just simplify, bringing the document up to, up to date. And then there's just a statute under amendment that I have to look up to see if it's still relevant, because sometimes they change those. And I think that was the last of my notes on this, and was definitely looking for anybody else's feedback. The chief and I have both reviewed it, looked it over. It's, when it was created back in 2013, 14, when it was signed, it's a, I still think it's a really good document, and the fact that it's been a decade, more than a decade, and it still holds true for exactly what we're doing, and I think still serves everybody's purposes. I just want to commend whoever it was in the past that put this together, because this was, I think this was really good for both communities, but happy to hear your side as well.
No, I think that makes sense.
Does anybody have any questions on the proposed changes in language to the contract? Or even questions about where we are as far financially, how we got offset? I think Michelle did a good job explaining where we're at, or even the percentage of cases that each town uses. Travis has done a great job to break those up for us, but Counselor Thibodeau?
Okay, under 4.1 apportionment, the new language is just using a calculation of a five-year average. There will no longer be a percentage, is that correct?
That is what the proposal is, is that that goes away.
Okay. Do we have any examples for what that five-year average would have looked like?
Yes.
And where would I find, is it?
So this packet of information?
Yes.
Last page, flip it right around to the back, the very last page of it. Stephanie?
Oh.
This one.
That one?
They're both kind of similar, but yes.
Last page, okay. Okay, you might want to, and this was our budget? Am I on the wrong one? Oh, gotcha, thank you.
So it's the annual fire budget every year, minus Benton's portion. Well, showing what Benton's portion is and what percentage of the budget that paid. And then what the percent, so we didn't have anything prior to for the call volume. I was only able to get back to 18, 19 to start doing what the percentage of calls for five-year average would look like. And then what Benton's portion should have been based upon calls. And then the difference between what they did pay and what they would have paid based upon the calls. And my understanding of this document and the 5% piece came from the very beginning where I believe there was a large disparity then in the amount that Benton paid. They paid a flat amount, and I think that that had continued year after year after year after year. And it was recognized that they weren't paying the percentage of the usage. And that's why this was created. But nobody wanted the town of Benton to have sticker shock, for lack of a better word, of going from X amount to X amount, which is where I think this conversation comes into play this evening, or maybe even future conversations, is how, how do, how does Benton get to the point where we need you to be to match those pieces? And what, what's your ability to be able to do that? And can we know that we start exactly five-year average amount for next year and figure out what to do with the discrepancy that's now? Or how, how does that work? How, how does that all play out? I do know from past conversations that I've had with the Benton selectmen, not all of you were selectmen at the time, was that, and Travis and I were there, that I know that you were working towards getting public safety into your TIF district, so they had the ability for funds for that. And I don't know what other, other avenues, but we've, we've talked about this a couple of times, and, and where everybody's at with that. So that's the piece that I just don't know.
So we're really close. I spoke to the Tina at the?
Yep, Tina Mullins.
Yep.
D E C D.
This morning, earlier this morning. We have about, I don't know, we had some minor, minor changes that we had to make. So those were all made and sent to her. She felt she was going to do one more glance over everything, and then the next step would be to produce the letter that will go to the commissioner. I'll go to the attorney's office first to review, and then if they're okay with it, it'll go to the commissioner. And most of the time, the commissioner just signs it once it gets to their office.
Yeah. You're still talking, probably a month.
I think so.
Maybe not. It depends on how much they have down there for volume. You never know. Like, it's contingent on how many, how many other TIF districts are they reviewing down there? But you never know. But yeah.
So there was some new legislation that she suggested that we put in that speaks to the public safety piece, so we did add that in.
Good.
And so I think we're in fairly good shape there.
That, that's going to be good.
It'll help.
I, I believe last time we spoke that there was enough money in your TIF district funds that it was going to be able to assist you with all of this, so that we could all get on the same page.
Yep, I think so.
Yeah, right, Travis. Good.
So just a quick catch-up on the conversation here, because they've been talking, you know, prior to. What they're talking about right now is the discrepancy that we've had over the last few years with Benton because of that 5% cap. We'd like to get made back to whole, and the way that we're going to approach that, or Benton's going to try to approach it, is using their TIF money so that we don't strap Benton with a, you know, a huge bill that they weren't expecting. So just a quick recap on what Robin and Michelle are talking about right now. We, again, we like our partnership with Benton. We're in no way looking to hamstring anybody, and we'd like to keep this agreement rolling. By removing this 5% cap and we stick to the five-year average, are there any questions from anybody from Benton that feel that is unnecessary or unwanted or warranted?
I don't know that there's any significant changes that we need to make with the language. I was trying to do the calculation, of course, right? To see what it would look like. And so the difference between the last line, if we just look at the 273 and some change that we're paying this year, this fiscal year, and what we would have paid based on the call volume would be 334, 458, is what, is the way I'm reading that, is that right, Michelle?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, so there's a gap of about $61,000.
Yep, $60,804. But you have to look at the next line down. So that was the regular operating budget for this year? So the next line down is where we're actually at with the three full-time employees. So it actually, Benton was still at the 273, 654, 15. Should have been 438, 219, 89, with a gap of 164, 565, 74. Now, one of the things too is, we want to make sure, I think, the call volume sheet that's here, this other piece that I had given you for call volumes, just so you could see the breakdown of types of calls, and, and the chief is here, happy to answer any of the questions if you want to know how their reporting actually works. I think this is done, we did this as a calendar year. That would be different because the contract specifically states, caveat, that's this sheet. It's a fiscal year.
Right.
Right? And so that would, and now that you've changed your fiscal year, it would, we'd be on the exact same page, July to June, July to June, July to June, July to June.
Should make everything easier.
Yes.
And I can run the call stats that, that fiscal year as well, too?
Yes.
If you guys would like to see that.
Well, I don't, I just live over the other side of the bridge, and honestly, I've seen the call volume go up just because I see you going up and down the hill all the time, so.
So what we would propose to do, if it's, when this is all said and done, and this is all agreeable, what you would receive, I envision you receiving from the town of Fairfield is a statement that includes the five-year fiscal year averages, and what your current bill is, what the difference would be, and then you would see, and then what Benton does with that, and how they choose to put that forward to the town of Fairfield is, is up to you.
And I just look at it, I think what's an important thing, and Chairman Martin has already talked about it, I think it's about building trust. So I think, you know, we can talk from Fairfield, I think this is, this makes sense to us. But I have to think about, I try to put my, you know, I have to put my hat on and think about Benton and, and building that trust. And like, how do they, they need to be able to trust us that we're doing the right thing as a fire department, that we're looking out for the, for the group on that. And I'm not sure how we work on the conversation, so that's part of the budgeting process. I think that's an important part, too. So I'm not sure how you all feel about, but I think we have to be able, I think we are a close community, but we have to be able to trust each other that we're doing the right thing for each other.
So let's bridge into that. So we talked to Robin right before we started. I really like this format right now, where we, we're able to sit down, ask questions, talk, communicate. As a select board or town council, we can't do that by phone call, email. I'd like to see this group do an annual, a once-a-year annual review meeting where we can sit down, we continue to build that trust and working relationship. We haven't done it in a long time. So if it's all right with Benton and my cohorts in Fairfield, I'd like to see us do an annual budget workshop with, with our neighbors.
I think this makes sense.
Michelle?
One of the things too, in, in reading this, right? So every time you dust one of these things off, you realize all the things that you're probably not doing. You know, is the timeframe, right? So the, the fire chief is supposed to present the budget to the town of Benton on December 1. I know that there were times that Duane, you know, only in the 10 years I've been here, that, that the former chief, Duane Bigford, did go to Benton and speak to the Board of Selectmen, but I don't know how often that actually was. And I feel like, we have already talked about the fact that that is definitely a piece that we need to do. So a lot of the exercises we've been doing, leading up to this meeting and putting numbers and stuff together, is so that we're going to be able to do that. And Benton's going to know what the budget looks like for next year and have a copy of that by the 1st of December. That is a big thing that we're working for. However, what that budget looks like the 1st of December has a lot to do with the conversations that are going to happen here tonight. So it is a, it's a good, good timing piece, but yeah, definitely.
So now that we're on the same fiscal cycle, we could move that December off into probably April?
No.
No?
Nope, it's too far. Because you have to think about town, well, no, because we have to do, our budget has to be approved by the Budget Committee, by the council altogether. Their budget still has to be approved. We all still have budget warrants, that kind of stuff. I think April is going to be too late.
But we're not going to have those numbers in December. We, I mean, maybe March? I mean, when, when do we get into our fire department budget? When are we going to finalize those?
There'll be finalized, our end, it's finalized in December. Council meets to review the budget January.
Okay.
And, and, and Budget Committee usually meets February, so, so yeah. It's, it's not, it's not an out-of-line timing. It, it is when we do our budget prep anyway.
Okay.
Okay, so that way, I, I don't know when you all start your, Benton starts their process, but you guys still have town meeting, you still have to have that vote, they still have the same warrant process, everything else, so.
Start preparing the next budget from the treasurer's perspective initially, and then it gets to the select board to take a look at and make adjustments. So that happens towards the end of December into January.
January, yeah.
And then we, you know, typically then start to have select board discussions and then open it up to the Budget Committee.
Because that's usually about the time as we're wrapping up the numbers is about the time somebody from Benton calls and asks what they're going to.
Yeah.
So I thought they were close to the same.
Yeah.
So would it be more prudent to do maybe a mid-January meeting annually? Where it's, where it's in that budget cycle and we all have a say? Or, I just don't, we're not going to be prepared to give a good number in December, and where our fiscal period starts July 1 doesn't give us a lot of time to see how things are working in that one fiscal period.
I think, I think the only problem with doing it early January is the potential for new counselors or whatever the case may be. We have a lot going on in the, in the first part of January. I think December makes the most sense. I know the numbers, I mean, if we're meeting, we're talking about trust, we can get a ballpark on what Travis is thinking of in December. I don't think there's going to be any drastic changes. If there are, it's probably going to be from our discussions as a group of, what about this? What about that? And then that's where the trust factor comes in, okay? Then we roll into the new year. Because as we know, what happens in January, we have a whole new council or selectmen, whatever, do, do whatever. And that's, again, I'm, I'm looking at the new counselor, drinking through the proverbial fire hose of everything, and now I'm looking at a fire budget and meeting with these folks and trying to make sense of it, where we've been working together all along. I think, I just think it makes the most sense to do it towards the end of December with the numbers that Travis has, and we discuss it.
So I didn't realize your council members switched in January.
January 1.
Okay, all right, so that makes it hard, because that's inside of that, start of that budget process. So I would tend to agree, only because everybody's here has heard this conversation and other conversations. We, if it's a, a target number, but it isn't confirmed, we outline it that way in the, in the budget documents, so I don't think that's problematic, and then a date to be confirmed, which is an estimate generally, when things come in. So I don't, I don't know that that's problematic from our perspective.
So mid-December?
Because we could have a reduction through the, through the Budget Committee process and the selectman process and council process.
We typically have one meeting in December?
Typically, depending on how the holidays fall. But this format, and the reason why is because of the holidays.
Yeah.
But this format for you as a workshop could possibly lend itself well as to do a pickup meeting somewhere in there where you're not having as many meetings in that month, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't anticipate it being a long meeting, just building that relationship.
I mean, I don't know, is it, you'll need to do it this December? Because we're all sitting here right now, but, and maybe it's a follow-up later on, who knows? Depending on how the rest of this meeting goes, but yeah, yeah, absolutely. Because I do think it's important, because one of the things that the fire department has is a teeny snippet of, they started a couple of years ago billing insurance crashes, insurance companies for crashes, usually most of them are the interstate. But it is a little, if we get any revenue from that, it is a small amount of revenue, and that needs to also be shared, I believe. And you'll see, as we've looked at things, and more so in like your next conversation, of how that sharing kind of works the same exact way, so.
Okay, so you think we, we should set a mid-December workshop meeting, tentatively, starting next year, December 26? We'll leave that up to Chief, the town manager and the?
Evening of the 24th.
20, 20.
The 24th, yeah.
The 24th, yeah.
Might as well be, yeah.
2026, right?
We were, we're all joking that it's going to be on the date, the 26th.
I'm sorry. So I think we'll leave that to be set by, by Chief Leary, our town manager and the Benton chair. If that's okay.
When do you seat any new selectmen, select board members?
June.
June, yeah. So you're, so you'll be all there. So it won't be any issue?
No.
Okay.
Well, there'll be a change, right, if we're, if we're doing it next year at this time in December.
But at least they, the new select, any, any new select board member will have been on for several months, you know, three, four months ahead of time. So they won't be quite as inundated if they're stepping in.
Yes.
That's good.
Do you seat immediately after election or?
After, yes.
Immediately after the election?
Yeah, yeah.
So the way it works here is they get voted in in November, but they take seat first of the year. Why it's always been that the council function on a calendar year, but the budget, I think it's just a holdover from when they changed their fiscal year, they didn't change the council seats, so.
It's really hard, because we used to have the town meeting in March, right, but it's really hard to hold it in March, particularly now with the change. If you're changing your select board members and you hold the budget vote till after, right, it makes it very difficult for the new people to sit in that town meeting and try to be able to answer questions about the budget. So we flip flopped it and said, well, we'll do the town meeting first, followed within a few days for the election.
Please.
Interesting.
We've had those similar discussions. We set our, we set our goals at the beginning of the year and it's hard when you're first coming in. So we totally understand. Maybe we'll, we'll get there.
All good.
Okay. Are there any other questions from Michelle or Travis, just on, on those amounts that Michelle had on the last page? The very last figure that you do see, it is highlighted in gray, 164, 565 and 74 cents. That does include the three full-time equivalent firefighters that we, we put on as a separate article in our election, that our town folks wanted more staff. I'm going to turn this portion over to Travis because we had a, a fire audit and we are still understaffed. We, we currently have three full-time equivalents per shift and we also have a utility position, 40-hour a week, Monday through Friday, I believe. So we're at 10 staff positions. Our audit, when, when we did our, our audit meeting, they request that we have four per shift. That would keep us fully manned in case there, there is a fire and we send four people, they can enter the building, two in, two out rule. I'm going to turn it over to Travis just so he can explain that to you. We, we do need to get there at some point. We'll discuss it further on in this agenda. But Chief Leary, please explain what I'm trying to, trying to talk about.
Yeah, sure. So, so the audit was done kind of on the heels of, of the, you know, the, the need to change like Councilman Martin said for the BLS requirement, FBI requirement of two in, two out. So Maine Bureau of Labor Standards says that anytime we go to a, and it doesn't even have to be a house fire, but any, anytime you're in immediate danger, so they call it the IDLH, it says that if you have two people enter that dangerous area, you need two people to perform a rescue for those first two people. So hence the two in, two out rule. So since the middle 70s, I believe, the fire department here in Fairfield has been staffed at two people per shift, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. In 2000, they funded the day utility position. That lasted till 2012? Right, 2012. That was eliminated during that, that year's budget cycle. So we went back to just the two and then until this audit came about to give us, you know, more scientific data and also a third party, you know, representation of that. Yes, this is, this is very much needed, you know? It wasn't just, hey, we need, we would like more people. So obviously, in that same amount of time from the 70s till, till this audit, the call volumes have drastically increased over the years. You know, we went from 300 calls a year in the 70s to, to 1,895 calls last year. So with two people, we did get the day position back in 2023. Fairfield Council did appropriate the funds to, to put that back in. So that was a help. But it became a real safety issue and it has been for several years of, of just not meeting the safety standards for the two in, two out. And the call company as well, right, that has gone away over the, over the past few decades. In years past, in the 80s and 90s, there was actually two companies in Fairfield, Fairfield Center, Intown. The Fairfield Center Company would handle calls that the Intown company would not even go to. That's how many people they had, you know? So that has dwindled to, we have, knock on wood, got some people back. We're, we're right around 19 right now called company members. So that's very good.
And Chief, you're talking, you're talking about our call, our volunteers, you're talking about volunteers now.
So, so obviously that's not dependable, right? You know, they're not at the station, they're not on that first response, which is when that two in, two out is, is really needed, that initial response. So that's where we got the audit. I don't know, I think you guys received a copy of the audit back then.
Yep.
I don't know how many of you have seen it. They, they looked at everything though, the types of equipment we have, manpower, training, water supply, you know, through the Kedebit Water District, our dispatch operations. They really went from one end to the other of the fire department and came up with these recommendations. So yeah, that's kind of where, where we came from and why we were asking for the, this more staffing. And we still need to get to that, that four people per shift. So that's where we're at. So if I have any questions about that or?
So I just want to reiterate, I'm a lifetime Fairfield Center resident. Like Chief said, the center had their own call department and it, it was massive. Things have changed over the last two, three decades. We, we don't have the volunteers we used to. A lot of them were mill employees and businesses would shut down when there was a fire. You were expected to help your community and go, you were paid to go by your employer, whether, whether it was SAPI or Hudamaki or whatnot. Just, just things have changed. So to be, to be able to rely on those volunteers to get there in a timely manner, we know we've had some recent fires where, I mean, Chief's there in eight minutes and still, or five minutes and, you know, they're complaining because we don't have the four people, you know? The people that are there are waiting to get compliance and be safe so that we don't have any injuries or deaths. And we, we'd like to get to that four people per shift. So we're not relying on that. The mutual aid agreement is, is what I am, I'm floored at how seamless it works. I'm going to let Travis explain it too because, you know, obviously we, we may have multiple calls. Fairfield Benton has a big area to cover combined. It's rare, but there are, there are occasions where there's calls almost simultaneously. But our partners with Winslow and Albion and Clinton and Skowhegan and Noradwok, Vasselboro, China, I mean, it's amazing. I'm, I'm so impressed with our mutual aid. So Travis, can you just explain a little bit about our mutual aid program?
Yeah, so, so all the area departments, we are very, very fortunate in this area. We have a great mutual aid system. For several years now, the chiefs have been getting together on a, you know, not every month, but we meet six, seven times a year. You know, we, we do, and it's not just fire scenes either. I mean, we've gotten, we've gotten literally millions of dollars in federal funding from regional grants. So it's just, we're very fortunate to be in the area we're in. So basically, when we have a, an emergency that we can't handle, we have a protocol out because we cover 84 square miles of, of area, which is a very large area. We have, we're broken down into districts. So the Intown is, is district one. Fairfield Center is district two, Hinkley's three, and Benton's four. So with our dispatch being Somerset, depending on where the fire is located or, you know, accident or whatever the case is, we will ask for mutual aid. We call it a second alarm or a third alarm for that particular district. And they, they hit a button and it tells them, okay, zone four Benton, we're going to call Clinton, Albion, Winslow. And it goes right down the list. So they will come, we have, all have mutual aid agreements, you know? And then in turn, when Albion has a fire, when Winslow has a fire, we return the favor. So it's a, it's a very well-oiled machine. You know, we're very fortunate. The chiefs all work really close together. We know everybody's operations in and out. This past winter was a prime example. We had a fire on Kelly Street in Fairfield. We were at that scene working, house fire. We had Waterville, Winslow, Clinton, Oakland was there. About 25 minutes into this fire, still active fire, we get called to the East Benton Road for house fire. Luckily Noradwok had come down to cover Fairfield, so Noradwok went. They had absolutely no idea where they were going because they are from Noradwok. But luckily the Clinton crew, I kicked them loose and they went right, right ahead of them. And then they called in Albion, they called in China, they called in Vasselboro. And they went there, they handled the fire. I sent Chief Murphy from the Fairfield Fire to go help with that fire and Chief Groder from Augusta, who's also on Oakland. But they went, they handled the fire and they called me, you know, a few hours later and said, hey, this fire is out and this is what's going on. Okay, I'll come up and investigate. You know, but it was just, it was great to see. Fortunately, that doesn't happen very often, but when it does, everybody kind of pulls together. So, so it's great. But it's that initial, you know, and it's everywhere, right? That initial response of, of, of those, that core group that needs to get there as soon as possible to try to mitigate that emergency. We unfortunately just saw this last week, we had a fatal fire in Benton. You know, unfortunately that fire had about a 30-minute head start on us. So we just, there was nothing, no amount of time was going to, was going to help that situation. But the guys did, they, they tried to make entry and, you know, definitely put themselves in rest to, to try to attempt a rescue. So, so yeah.
Kevin?
Chief, I have a question.
Yep.
On the agreement under 7.2 mutual aid, kind of in the center there says mutual aid agreements shall be negotiated, approved and administered by the fire chief after notices given to the municipal officers and parties. Can you walk me through that process?
Yeah, so, so basically if we were going to, most of our mutual aid agreements are just, they're pretty basic in terms of, you know, if we have an emergency that our, our resources are tapped out, we will, you know, you agree to send your resources to help us. There's like, there's other agreements called automatic aid agreements that we could do. So in that, in that case, we would negotiate with, say Winslow and we would say, hey, you know, we're, we know we're short-staffed. So anytime we have a fire on Benton Avenue, Winslow will automatically be dispatched. We don't even have to ask for them. So that's another type of mutual aid agreement that you can negotiate. And if they agree, you know, they say, yep, that's great. Anytime we have a fire on, you know, Benton Avenue, Winslow, you guys are automatically. And we kind of do do that with like Hudamaki and SAPI actually. So Hudamaki, if there's a, any type of fire call at Hudamaki, Waterville and Fairfield both go automatically without, doesn't matter if it's a campfire or, you know, fire blowing through. SAPI is the same way now. If Skowhegan goes, we go.
How often do you guys review these?
Not, probably not often enough. But it's something that's come up recently, especially BLS has started like looking at these plans and requiring more. So we're kind of updating them. But, but I would say ours have all been recently updated by Chief Bickford within the last 10 years probably.
They were done in 2019.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So yeah, it, it is good to refresh them. Fortunately, you know, we don't have a lot of big changes in our area. So there isn't really the need to, to do stuff. But that would be an example. If you wanted to do an automatic mutual aid, that would be something that you could get the parties together and negotiate and so have an agreement drawn up and sign it. Yep.
Michelle?
So the way it works, just up more from the administrative side as opposed to how the police department actually functions if you're not aware. The way these agreements actually work, so there, there's a law that allows us to do this, but you have to have permission, right? Everybody has to have permission, everybody has to agree. And the biggest reason for that is because of what these agreements also cover. Not just that we will come, but if Winslow comes here and they're providing mutual aid and one of their employees gets hurt or their apparatus gets broken, that is still Winslow's responsibility. It is not ours. And the same vice versa. If we go there, it's our responsibility, not theirs. So these agreements also cover and keep a lot of us from having lawsuits and screaming about who's responsible for what. It makes it all very, very clear that the financial obligation is borne by the municipality that is sending the equipment and the staff. It is a really good piece. We never used to track, or the council never used to receive information about mutual aid. And we had a counselor many years ago that asked about that. And the thought process was, is that Fairfield was leaving more than people were coming. And actually that year, people were coming more than we were leaving. So it always, some years are more than others, but it works out and, and it balances out. And it's a, it's a great piece because in rural Maine where the volunteer, you know, pieces have dropped off, a lot of the services that not only Fairfield, but all of the surrounding municipalities provide across the entire state, quite frankly, it just couldn't be done without mutual aid. It just can't be. And, and so they're really great pieces. They were all redone in 2019. And there's multiple layers. We have them for the police departments. There's also some county-wide ones. There's some statewide ones. There's some laws that are emergencies that override, you know, all these different things. But it's a great, great, great process. But, yep.
That answers all the questions.
That's fine. I, I just, for our folks that are watching, we'll watch tape version. Mutual aid for us, we are so fortunate. The, the local chiefs, I mean, Travis grew up in the fire department. He's also been chief of Clinton. Randy Caswell is a longtime resident of, of the area. He's now chief of Clinton. They grow up, they work together. Chief Murphy in Winslow, longtime Fairfield Fire Department. They, they're friends. I know they're good friends. They talk, they work fantastic together. Ryan Johnson, Skowhegan's new fire chief, fireman forever, Clinton. He's a Clinton resident, born and raised, Waterville Fire Department for a long time. Now he's with Skowhegan, Jason Frost in Waterville. These guys know each other very well. I mean, I'm leaving out China with Danny, who's resigned, Oakland. But, but again, the relationships they have, they go far beyond just, just the town in mutual aid. These guys grew up together. We're very fortunate. It's why I mention in this, they know each other, they have a great deal of respect for each other. They treat each other's towns like they're their own. And I don't think that happens in your bigger cities, you know? If we're talking about Portland or Bangor, I really, I don't see, ever going to see the kind of niche that we're fortunate to have. And for somebody who's not a fireman or hasn't been, I mean, I've watched it for 50 years. It's seamless. I'm so amazed at the work they do for each other. So we're, we're really fortunate. Benton Fairfield, I mean, we've, we've got a chief that's been two different departments and he has those relationships and we should be blessed that we have that. So just again, kudos to Travis and all those other departments that, that work together. I mean, we have our neighbors covered whether we're into an inter-local agreement or not, that mutual aid is beneficial to everybody. So thank you. Just want to reemphasize that on how fortunate we really are. Does anybody have any more questions on the agreement to change? Again, it's just, this is just a discussion, it's not fire. We can put those together. I think we've discussed that we'd like to meet maybe mid-December, once a year. I think that would be fantastic. Chiefs covered pretty much everything we're at, budget-wise, our union contract. We just settled this year, three-year agreement. We got on par where we needed to be salary-wise to compete with the other local municipalities. We've got a pretty good, I think Steph and I were part of that negotiation. The next two years, we've got a good handle on those raises. Health insurance is always going to be something we just don't control. we just don't control. Michelle's got some preliminaries. I'm gonna throw out maybe 9%.
No, it is 9%. Our, our health insurance will be a 9% increase on medical, no change to dental and vision. If you're through Maine Municipal Association and you have the Katatin Plan, PPO 500, it's a 9% increase.
So we've got great benefits, but they cost money. And if we want to keep good people, we have to offer them. So the salary and benefits are gonna be the number one drivers of our contract. We will do our due diligence to make sure we, we're not overpaying, but we, we want to keep our staff. I think, I'm gonna knock onward here for the first time.
Don't you say that.
We're, we're, we'll use the F word, okay?
We're complete.
We're, we're complete, okay. So we've got 10 right now. We just, we just fulfilled those last two positions. They just got approved at our last meeting. And I think we're gonna move on to our, our next discussion of topic is the future of ambulance transport services. I'll lead right into it and then I'm gonna turn it into, over to Michelle because she went to some meetings. Our costs with Delta, they continue to go up as their, you know, their costs go up. We pay at a per capita rate, per town. They like to separate us per town, but we, we are one EMS service. So when I talk about it, I like to talk about the impacts of both of our towns as one. When we talk about our fire department budget, it's, it's one budget. We may split it up by percentages, but it's still one budget. We're at the mercy of Delta. They, they charge what they have to. We don't really have a whole lot of say. It's a take it or leave it type thing. That per capita has increased. It's gonna increase again. They had recent meetings in China. I think they invited some, most of their area towns that they cover. Michelle and Peter went for us. So I'll turn it over to them. They can, they can talk about that. But before I do turn it over, you know, that set price for, for a private company, we have no say. You know, it, it could be $25 or $35 per capita today, tomorrow it's 100. Again, we're at their mercy. That's our only service. For Fairfield, I know, it's, it's a very important service. Our people want to make sure they call for an ambulance that they're going. Fairfield Benton EMS is gonna show up and do the triage. They're gonna be there and take care of our people, but we don't currently transport. So that's why we, we really need to talk about the future of our ambulance service. Michelle, can you just lead into how those discussions went in the China meetings? Because I know recently China has applied for their transport license, or at least it's been reported in the paper. So.
Yes, that they were applying for, it's an intermittent transport, is that what it's called?
Yeah, just transporting in, in the event that, that Delta's not available.
That Delta's not available. So they, I actually was surprised. I didn't realize that, that China had even purchased an ambulance until I got there that day. And we do know that multiple municipalities do have them. It's no secret to anybody here that this has been a topic of conversation amongst the region for years now, right? So we were fortunate in which we had a system that was in place, that there was no charge for all of these municipalities because Delta is a private entity for whole hosts of reasons. Lots of it due to, you know, just changes in other outside economic influences such as, you know, Medicaid, Medicare, insurance reimbursements. We can blame COVID, we can blame all kinds of things. But the position we're in now today is that we are now in year three of paying for ambulance service, which is not anything that any of, of the member municipalities is expected to have within their budget. We worked through that. It started out at a number and every year it has increased. Delta has had those conversations with its members. They have been doing the pieces to meet with their communities. So this meeting in, did any of you, anybody from Benton go to that? So it was opened up to mostly, it was like managers and, and council and selectmen members. I went, Becky Hatgood was there, of course, because it was her office, but, which is the, the manager for, for China. Most of the folks that were there the first day that I went were, they were firefighter EMS folks, right? So they were the fire chiefs, the people that belong. A lot of the municipalities that are in the same, you know, pool as we are with Delta do not have full-time departments. They, you know, they don't, they have volunteers. They don't, they don't have people on all the time. And Delta provides their 100% full-time service. As we have discussed in the past, all of us as a group or some of your, your previous council members and our, and selectmen members, you know, Fairfield is in a different situation in which we do respond to every EMS call. We are there. We already have a full-time department. We are responding to all those pieces. So these conversations have continued with, what does it look like? So, and this year's, of course, that's when the price rate was, was introduced, the 55 to 60 amount per capita. So being a good-sized jump. Plus also the conversation about Delta changing their license and not being at the paramedic level. I do believe you, if you did not receive any, haven't seen the email, you should have received it. It did come out this afternoon, that, that has changed and they are going to be staying at the paramedic level and being able to make some programming adjustments and be able to operate the way they are. And that has a lot to do with the fact that not every call has to, needs or requires a paramedic onboard. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. So there are agreements that happened. And I mean, we can get into the weeds on this really quickly, but there have been conversations in which if an ambulance was to come to Benton or Fairfield and there was no paramedic available, but they needed paramedic-level services and Fairfield had a paramedic, we provided the paramedic, and then there would be a, a financial piece that would take place within that. And so those are conversations that we're actively having. There'll probably be more to come on that in November for the, the town council here. That's something that we wish to go forward with. So that's it, I think, for the meetings. We can go into some other things if you want me to continue with, with just continuing to go forward with this conversation.
Yeah. Do we have any questions about what Michelle just laid out for us before we move forward? I'd like to go over, she has, we've got a chart that just shows our Delta costs currently, what we're paying. No knack on Delta. They provide a service. They do a great job. Our residents are fortunate to have them. It has fulfilled it for, for a number of decades. Again, financially, things have changed. Waterville, Winslow, two of their biggest service areas have pulled out, put them in some financial constraints that now we're on a per capita basis. But now it affects our taxpayers in a different basis because now it's no longer just the fire department. Now there's a Delta cost. And for us, we share that fire department and we split that again by our, by our percentage. But we're each billed separately for Delta cost per capita. It's the same amount per person that lives in your town, but it's still, when you look at the mutual towns, it's, it's a lot of money. So currently, if you look at the chart, 25, 26 at a $35 per capita. The town of Fairfield has population that they're, that they're using. I'm assuming it's the census, the last census population.
They're using, I think it's, it's, I believe last, it's like Maine Municipal Association's numbers, but yeah. It's the same consistent number every year, yes.
So roughly Fairfield, 6,478 people. Benton, 2,756 people. So we were roughly a little over 9,200 combined. This year, combined, we were billed for $323,190 to service. That's gonna take us through June 30th, I believe, of
Yes.
Of 26. Next year, with those meetings, again, I didn't attend, but the number 55 to 60 was thrown out. That's assuming that no other municipalities pull out of that, that district because as Delta's costs go up, I'm sure that we'll get passed along to the remaining municipalities. So, but nonetheless, at 55, which is the preliminary discussion between Fairfield and Benton, our increase would go to $507,870. This is important because again, we need to get to a, a fire level of four per department to, to reach our audit levels where we would like to be. We do have paramedics, fortunately for us on every shift. That would staff, that $507,000 would staff over three-plus full-time personnel for, for our combined service. So it's, it's a cost that we're already spending. We're spending to another entity that we could bring in-house, control ourself honestly for, for less money because we have 10, we have nine and a full-time day person. If we could convert that, that 10th person to a, to a 10th full-timer, we'd have to hire two or roughly two and a half people. A rough estimate, probably 350,000. That is including benefits. There are other expenses, you know, obviously we'd, we'd have to apply for that transport license. We'd have some additional insurance costs, equipment and that initial investment. We're fortunate enough to have a, an ambulance donated to us. It should be here probably within the next month. We would still need to, to purchase a second ambulance. But that also puts us in a, a position where we can bill for that transport service. I would never put it as a revenue source, but it would absolutely cover the personnel and the equipment needed for it. So I think those are discussions that, that we need to have in this roundtable and, and ask the appropriate questions. Again, fortunately for us, Travis has done this with Clinton. Those mutual aids with Waterville, Winslow, Clinton, Albion, those are services that already provide, towns that already provide that service. So it wouldn't be anything new for our chief. They would, they would be billing, we would still want mutual aid and contracts with Delta. We don't want to leave them hanging or, or the service area, our neighbors such as Oakland, Sydney, Smithfield, that may not be in the position that we are in. But certainly a discussion we need to, to have. I think it'll be very beneficial and a cost savings for our citizens, both, both communities, both towns, if we start to move forward like Clinton, Winslow and Waterville have done. So I'm gonna open that up for discussion. Anybody have any questions for chief on his experience with, with running an ambulance service or, you know, why are those numbers, you know, what I said they are? Any concerns or questions moving forward?
You talked about, you talked about board chief that, you know, you're not looking at it as a situation, it's not money, but if you can come, just provide a better service. Your, your big talking point has always been, I just want to provide better service.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, you know, we've had this discovering, discussion several times and we are not gonna make money, right? You might as well forget it. You're not gonna make any money. What you do do is you, and I think revenue is a bad word, and, and I like to think of it as cost recovery, right? We're taking some money in to offset the cost of, of, of operations, basically. We are in a very unique situation, however, we're, unfortunately, we do have full-time staffing in place already. And we have the call volume to support it. A lot of places will try to do this and necessarily don't have the call volume because you do need the call volume. You know, to start an ambulance service is extremely expensive. So if you're only doing 300 transports a year, you're not recovering any of the cost. We have about 1,100 transports a year, give or take. So, you know, we can recover more of that cost back. And the big thing is, is where we're just established. We have that full-time staffing. So we can provide that care from start to finish, you know. You know, we, we go now, we first respond, we start treatment, we give Delta a rise, we give them a report, tell them what we've done, you know, and assist them loading the patient and they go to the hospital. So now we can, we can get that patient treated, get them into the ambulance and start towards the hospital. So in essence, we're, we're, you know, I think we would see less on-scene time. And in a critical patient, that patient's gonna go towards the hospital sooner, just because Delta's a little farther away, you know. Nobody's fault, it's just where they're coming from. So if somebody's having a cardiac MI, you know, a heart attack, that's right on Main Street, you know, we can get to them in three minutes, start treatment. You know, it's gonna take Delta eight, nine minutes to get here. So they wait, then they go to the hospital. Whereas we can get there in three minutes, get them on the stretcher, treat on the way to the hospital, and we're at the hospital in 10 to 12 minutes. So do you see that, that difference? Now, that's not always the case, right? Sometimes we have to treat us on the scene, in the house. Sometimes we can't transport fast. And that's just situational though. So that, like, like Councilor Townsend said, that's our goal, right? To provide good treatment to, to our patients. There will be times where we don't have a paramedic on, on duty. We don't, you know, because we just don't have a paramedic in every position. In that case, we would treat to the level that we're at. And if need be, we would call for assistance for, for a paramedic from somebody else and/or the hospital becomes our ALS care. So if we can get to the hospital quicker than waiting for a paramedic from another service, then we go to the hospital. So roughly, I don't, don't quote me, but 25 to 30% of the calls require a paramedic. So it's, it's a fairly low percentage. But there's always gonna be times where we just don't have that. We do have a lot of back-to-back calls. Hence the, when we did this audit, getting back to the audit, one of their big recommendations was to start a transport service with the four personnel per shift. So if you had to, you could cover two medical emergency calls at the same time with the necessary equipment. So with four personnel, we would be able to, to staff two ambulances if needed. That in turn does cause an issue though, that will leave us empty. So there are steps that we can take to, to help with that. We would have callbacks for, for duty staff or the call company. We would put a tone out, hey, both ambulances are busy right now. We need people to come in and cover the station. And/or we would rely on mutual aid like we do now. So there's a, there's a lot of moving pieces to this. It is not easy by any means. The, you know, the licensing process is lengthy. There's a lot of what we call QA, QI, so qualitative, qualitative, quality assurance, quality improvement. So all our runs are reviewed for continuity of care, for the treatments are being done correctly. But also, it's necessary for billing, right? So if, if, if we bill for an advanced life support call, we need to make sure that we're doing the correct treatments, correct medications so we can bill for those correctly. Because you don't want to get into obviously, you know, falsifying billing and, and all that stuff. That would be done at the billing company level. But our folks need to be aware of the treatments that they do and documentation. So there, there's a lot to it. I know, I can ramble on for, for hours and I'm probably just gonna confuse you more than do any good. But did that kind of answer your question?
I think I always had this on, maybe others have. How did you make, in my opinion, from the outside, Clinton is successful. So how did you make that?
So I'm honestly not gonna take credit for that. So Clinton, Clinton was fortunate because they started transporting 60 years ago. You know, they saw a need right out of the gate that we, you know, they didn't want to wait or couldn't wait for Delta to respond all the way to Clinton or whoever was in. Actually, it was probably from the funeral home back then because that's where the original ambulance is responded from. You know, so they, they said, no, we, we want our own ambulance. So that, I was very fortunate that way. But, but yeah, it's a lot to maintain it, right? Because, you know, and we went through, through a lot of growing pains in Clinton with, with budget processes and increasing funds because, you know, in order for an ambulance to work, you gotta have people in. And, you know, we were at the point where we were having a struggle to, to find the people. The call company just, you know, wasn't what it was. And just the kind of the same story everywhere. So, so, but the town was very supportive and then they wanted, you know, they wanted their own ambulance. So, so obviously staffing is imperative, right? I mean, you just can't do it. You know, when we get this new ambulance in November, could we start transporting that if we had a license? Yeah, sure we could. Would it be effective and efficient? No, it wouldn't be, you know. There's a lot of calls that we would miss. We would then in turn have to rely on Waterville, Winslow, Delta. And we're just kind of, now we're hindering Waterville, right? Because now Waterville's coming to Fairfield five times a week. Winslow's coming to, you know, Benton. You know, so it's just, so to do it efficiently, you know, we would need the four, four people minimum and two ambulances. We, we are fortunate that we do have a lot of the equipment. Actually, we have all the equipment that we need, other than stocking more equipment, basically. But the big ticket items we have, we've already purchased or, or have been paid for through grants over the years. We just got a very generous donation from Al King for the purchase of the new ambulance. So that was at no cost to us. So yeah, that's kind of where we're at.
I don't want to jump in, but it's probably I don't want to jump in, but it's probably speculation at this point, but thoughts on what Waterville's recent actions, how that affects the whole local scene?
Yeah, sure.
Adding additional ambulance there, and then also talking maybe about how that might affect, you know, basic local agreements and mutual aid that way on the ambulance end rather than just fire.
Sure, yeah. So Waterville is, you know, obviously, they went to a transporting service several years ago, and their call volume is tremendous. There are over 5,000 calls a year. So is what they're seeing now, and I don't want to, you know, I don't want to speak for Waterville or Chief Ross, but from what I see is they're seeing now is they're starting to get employee burnout because their employees are running 20 calls a shift, you know. So they're running a lot of calls. With the closure of inland, that affected them, because now they're transporting more patients to Augusta instead of just transporting to Waterville. So now, a 30-minute call is turning into a 50-minute call or an hour-long call. So instead of having two ambulances readily available in the city, now one of them's gone to Augusta, you know, often. Sometimes, both have gone to Augusta. So they're seeing a lot more callbacks as well, you know, calling in off-duty personnel, call personnel to help cover the city, and/or their remaining staff. So they also have, they run an eight-person shift right now, so they have more staff. Two dedicated ambulances, so four of those people are on ambulances. One of them's a deputy chief, battalion chief. One's an engine driver, one's a ladder driver, and one's an officer. So if the four people on the ambulance are out, those other two people cover the third ambulance for the third call, that leaves the city with two people. So if they get a fire, they have two people. So you can see kind of the trickle-down effect, and they receive multiple calls like that on a fairly regular basis. So that in turn, you know, provoked Chief Ross to say, hey, we need more staff. I need to put on a third ambulance. But obviously, that's a substantial cost. So right now, they just passed, a couple weeks ago, they're hiring four personnel, not the eight. They're going to hire four, so they have semi-staffing of that third ambulance when they're full staff. The other issue they run into, too, is they're at an eight-person shift with a minimum seven, and it's probably at any given day, somebody's on vacation or somebody's out sick. So the chances of them running a seven are highly more likely than a eight. So they're kind of one person behind the eight ball, if you kind of get what I'm saying. So, but, yeah, so basically, that their call volume need has prompted them to try to add another shift. What that does to the area, you know, it could potentially help, but they're just that busy. So I don't know if it's going to be helped, honestly, or not, because they're just that busy. And that's everywhere. I mean, you know.
Travis, they run a much different schedule than we do.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, could you explain how maybe that would work if we can get to
Yeah, sure.
That 12 crew that you need to run our three shifts efficiently?
Yeah, so they, so there's been, there's different shifts that full-time fire departments work. Waterville runs what's called a 42-hour work week. So they, and it's more, it's more on your payment versus what you work. So they call it a 42-hour work week. They actually work 48 hours a week, but they get paid 42 hours a week. And the way the schedule goes, there's a short week in there. I'm not sure how many weeks it is, but every, the way the days fall, there's one week where there's only one day, and that 42 average makes the difference. So like here, we run a 56-hour work week, and I'm just going to confuse the heck out of you guys. I tried to explain. So here, we do, so in Waterville, they do, I believe they do one on, one off, no, one on, two off, four off. One on, two off, one on, four off. I believe that's what they do. So you work one day, you have two days off. You work one day, you have four days off. Here, with a 56, we do a little different. It's one on, two off, and then we have, I'm not even going to get into that. It's a mess. But, so the 56 is the average here, and that requires, or you can do it with any amount of staffing. The 40, the thing with the 42-hour work week is you need to have four shifts to make the days march out and the staff march out correctly. With hours, you only need three shifts. So in order to get to the 42-hour work week, which would, with our, let me go back, with a 56-hour shift, we have built-in overtime. So our folks get, essentially, get paid 53 hours straight time every week and three hours overtime every week. That's not quite the way payroll works, but in an essence, that's how it works. So in every 21 days, they get nine hours overtime. That's built in, you know, so we have to budget for that. Whereas, a 42-hour work week, it's 42 hours straight time every week, 52 weeks a year, unless you work over, then you get overtime. So there's a reduction in that built-in overtime by switching to the 42. The caveat is that you have to add the fourth shift to make it march out correctly. So we would have, if we went to four people...
Well, we want to stay with the three shift for now.
Yeah, yeah.
We would require 12.
Yeah.
Where Waterville, to run the same thing, runs four shifts, and if they had four per shift, they would need 16. Currently, they have eight. For them to get to four shifts, they need 32. So a lot different dynamic. But again, the main goal is to get to help. I mean, our paramedics, they're not just paramedics, they're firemen. Our firemen are EMTs. So we're not just hiring an ambulance driver. We're going to get compliant for our fire service, and they serve dual purposes. So at current level, we're at nine plus one, so we're at 10. We could get to 12 full-time. Basically, we're hiring two and a half because our 10 is a 40-hour position. They transfer into a full-time 56-hour position, and then we'd have to hire two more 56-hour position employees. Like Travis said, they average out 53, and we pay them 56.
So, well, no, that's not why. I can clarify.
Well, that's what the union contract says, right?
Yes, that's what the union contract, so Fair Labor Standards Act, so this is at the federal level, under those labor laws, there is what's called a 7K exemption. And it's common amongst firefighters. A lot of people know it as the Kelly Law, whereas they do not get paid similar to your normal 40-hour-a-week person. So if they work 40 hours, they do not get overtime at 40 hours plus. They don't get overtime until they go past 53 hours. And the way that works, you can, the municipality designates the cycle, whether it be seven days for one week, or you can go up to, it's 180 days, and, not 180 days, it's...
Hours is on like a three-week cycle.
28 days, or...
I think 28 is the max.
So we do a 21, so a three-week cycle. Anything over 53 in a week is at overtime. So to keep them from getting a short week, short week, really short week, but with a whole bunch of overtime in the last week, it is just split up. So it's paid on the assumption, while they might, their schedule may show they only worked 48 hours this week, we know that there's going to be a week that they work 72.
Right.
Because they work 24-hour shifts. So it allows them to have a consistent paycheck, and yes, takes it on its face value that we may be paying ahead, but we're also paying late. Anyway, so that's where that piece comes in. You can do it at a 42-hour week, right, so that they have that. You can do it, you just have to declare what that is. They just work less, or it sounds like they work less and it's further apart, but, yeah.
Well, the 42-hour requires more staff, and our staff does not want it. I can tell you that right now. They like their schedule.
So far, so good. It wouldn't be bad if you could ever get there. It would definitely require more staff.
Yeah.
The other piece you need to understand is that oftentimes, by going from a 56-hour week to a 42-hour week, any union contract's going to require you to make that employee whole.
Yeah.
Which means it usually comes with less hours, but a lot more money per hour. So they're making roughly about the same amount of money. And that's what Skowhegan did a year or so ago. A lot of people, you know, it's, you have to look at how that happened and how it gets there. They were very far behind in pay. They were in contract negotiations. It worked out perfect for them. We discussed doing it here. We had just finished contract negotiations. It was not going to work out perfect for us at all. And we kind of went away from it at that point in time, but it will always be part of our future conversations as to whether or not that's a better fit for our community, and how do you make that work. But it does require a lot more staff. So that is one of the pieces that's in there.
So again, back to our current contract, to get to four per shift, we would need, you know, to hire two, roughly two and a half, when you're talking contract money-wise, but it would, two additional people would get us fully staffed for four per shift.
We've done some of the math on that, if you want to see any of it, and what some of that looks like when you're ready.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm ready. I'd like to know what the cost, estimated cost analysis would be for staffing that would get us up to par for the four shifts. And I want to know, we already know how much a new ambulance would cost, but we'd also have to get that equipped as well. And just a ballpark figure, because I think this is the elephant in the room.
Well, we tried to get some pretty good estimated detail for you, and I believe we're going to succeed at our goal at ensuring that everybody is thoroughly confused by the time you leave here this evening. So I'm going to draw your attention here to the screens, maybe? Yes, I am. Okay. So one of the things that the fire chief did is he went through, if you notice up here in the corner, it says July 2026 wages meeting, so next fiscal year. He went through our current staff, exactly where they sit with wages, how this works, right? So regular 53-hour overtime, I mean, 53 hours, three hours of overtime. Every employee comes with a certain amount of holiday pay. Everybody has holiday overtime, and then the total wages for the employee. And he went through every single employee that we have, all the way down through to our current staffing level, which is right here, utility. This is what just wages is going to be right now, based upon current staff, current positions, current longevity, training, all of that, what we're predicting just for hourly wages.
And that's for '26, '27?
Yes. If you did three new positions and you took out this utility position, this 40-hour-a-week position right here, three new positions, this is what wages would be, just wages. Okay? Let me go all the way back here. We went through and added up, so what we're trying to do, this is why we should have a budget ready by the 1st of December, because we're almost there. We've gone through the benefits, okay? So sick time and vacation time replacement is a little bit different than most of any of your other departments. Because this department is staffed 24/7, if somebody goes on vacation, not only does that person get paid for their vacation, but we have to fund the person that has to fill their shift. So every amount of vacation time and sick time that's paid out comes at a double price, one to the employee, one to the replacement coverage. The only difference is, the replacement coverage is a little bit cheaper than the employee, simply because of the fact that they're usually per diems. There's no benefits involved. We're simply paying them an hourly wage. So those are two pieces that we have to budget for, based upon, quite frankly, sick time replacement is best guess. We use an average of what we've done in the past. Vacation replacement, we nominate vacation. Retirement, our employees have main state retirement for firefighters. It is a cost to the municipality at 13.2% of their wages, and then FICA and Medicaid, I mean Medicare, sorry. Then we went over and did all those same exact calculations for just those three utility positions, also in including this line right here, which is radios and turnout gear. Every new staff member needs a radio. Every new staff member, we estimate that they need turnout gear.
Uniform.
Right? They may not, but they usually do. And that cost combined for these three people ends up to this. What did we figure today? It's like $8,750 per person, I think is what it was. So then we went through, of course, you have the chief's position and his benefits. The per diems that we hire also for various different pieces, that's at 60. Operational costs, the fire station is very much a people department. That's a little, it's just averaged a little bit higher. Our total operational cost minus staff for this year was only 230-something thousand dollars for the fire department. It is very much a people providing service. And when you look at it this way, it's shocking how much actually goes into paper and supplies, medical supplies. Now, this would come, the reason we rounded it up to 250 is because if we did it, we know we have an ambulance coming, it may just require some more medical supplies, even without transport, right? Just different kinds of pieces, that cost of medical supplies. It's not definite, because things are going to, we know utilities are going to be up, that kind of stuff. Okay. Budget total with current staffing, 1.95 million. If we purchased a used ambulance, roughly about 153,000 is about the average going price. We added that in, and we added the three additional people, that cost, minus the utility. So that gave you a grand total of 2.5 million. And then we have another total of just current staffing at 2.3. Okay?
Okay, can we go back? So when we're looking at the total, grand total with three new staff versus the grand total of the current staff?
Yep.
We're looking at less than $200,000 difference?
Mm-hmm. And why are we?
1.9 for the current staffing level.
Played with this spreadsheet too many times, Travis. That is P...
It's over 500,000.
37 minus the ambulance.
Should be 1.9, should be about 600,000 difference.
Yeah, it should be. Talk amongst yourselves while I fix this, please.
Okay.
Because that was...
Line 32, Michelle, and line 39 should be the same.
But, so that's just current staff. That's not including the extra ambulance.
Two million, two, three.
Right.
No. The reason why it's not, it's current staff plus three new minus the ambulance. This was a number so that if you did not do transport, I'm sorry, the title is wrong.
Yeah.
Okay, because, remember, the goal is to get to three new staff.
Right.
So this was supposed to be current staff plus three new, with minus the ambulance purchase. That's why that's in there. I'm sorry. The title's just wrong.
So the numbers are correct?
Yes. I was like, why is that wrong? That's why I said, talk amongst yourselves, I'd figured it out, sorry.
Okay.
Okay. So we looked at what both of those would be, because again, irregardless of anything that we do, the goal is to get the department to four per shift. That's for the firefighters, you know, that's for the NFPA standards, that's for all of that, what that would look like. Then we looked at, okay, so then, obviously, with any time you look at expenses, what do you have for revenues to offset those expenses? So if we were to purchase a used ambulance, we would use capital reserve funds. So at 153,000, we already have capital reserve funds that have been funded, you know, by the town of Fairfield and the town of Benton, right? So that would just be a complete wash between the two. But then we looked at, if we did transport and put that into place, would there be any ambulance revenue that would offset the cost of... ambulance revenue that would offset the cost of providing the service? So we had, Travis and I had a difference of opinion. I was at 450,000, he was at 550,000. We split the difference and we used 500,000 today, because there have been estimates, but what we don't ever want to do is estimate high and we don't want to ever make any promises that this is going to be a process that pays for itself, because we all know that it's a service and that's not a revenue generator to make profit. And then if we were to split that revenue, just on the basis of the 23% for Benton, the 23% or the 77% portion for Fairfield, what would that number look like? So we then in turn did some calculations. And we'll be happy to provide all of this information to everybody. It just was not in a format in which it didn't need someone helping go over it, because I just didn't think it was user friendly yet. But we were trying to get this together. So one of the things we always keep in mind, right? So what's going to be the 26, 27 delta appropriation for both Benton and both Fairfield? And this is at the $55 per capita. So with the budget numbers that we've done, we've done some comparisons. If there was no transport, current staff levels, so not the additional three, what would Benton's expense be at the 23%? And then what's Fairfield's expense? And then the additional pieces for the delta? I think it must be somebody at the police department. And then, are they okay?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, so what, what the cost total would, that would be? Pretty, it's a, it's a good number to run the budget for next year. And then what if it was, if it was no transport with three new staff? And what does that number look like? So if you notice Benton's portion with staff is just slightly over, it's about $35,000 more. So Benton's portion of three new staff is about $35,000, okay, in this. And then what is that total? So then, the other piece up here is what do the numbers look like if it's the budget with transport, with three new staff? So that includes the purchase of a used ambulance, the use of the estimated revenue to offset costs, and what is that total? So the grand total expense minus estimated revenue for Benton would be 471,761. For Fairfield, 1,579,375,37. And what's the difference between those two are basically savings? It's roughly 2 and a half, 250,000 for Benton and around 650,700 for Fairfield.
And when you say there's a savings over how many, what's the time period on that?
That's in the first year.
In the first year?
Because what's happening is, is that, and that's the savings thing using existing costs, right? So in essence, it's not that anybody, you wouldn't be saving, you know, the per capita cost, you'd be paying that anyway. It's just it's going towards things that are happening at the Fairfield level and not, not to, not to Delta. And that's what that looks like.
I think we can probably break this down a little.
And we absolutely can break this down a lot better. We wanted to have, like you said, we were hoping to have it ready for you, but the insurance numbers just came in and, and bunches of different things. But it gives you at least food for thought. Because, I mean, and nobody, nobody will deny the fact that Fairfield and Benton combined at 507,000 for Delta ambulance is a, is a big number. Even, even Delta's not going to deny that that's a big number. But it, we're treated the same as everybody else. It's based upon per capita, but it's a big number. But if you could use that 507,000 and we could get the staffing levels to where we need to, and then you provide the service yourself, I mean, and this is making it sound really simple, because we all, it's not this simple.
Look, stop right there. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So that 115, you come online 54?
Yep. That's 23% of that 500,000 in estimated revenue.
Okay.
So like I said before, when we were talking about the agreement?
And that's how you got to the 470?
And that's how we got to that. Yep. So you see the, so the Benton with transport with three new staff. So that means the with transport meant it included the second ambulance, that, you know, the used ambulance at the 153, which is a wash, but the three new staff. And then minus the estimated revenue of 115 for Benton, that puts you at 471. So?
So if we were paying?
We should be paying now.
Current staffing levels?
So that 335, we'll call it, plus the 98.
Well, it would have been, so with the three staff that we already just hired?
Yes. Well, no.
Yep. So that's that bottom line. That's the 438,219.
Yep.
It was 471,761.
471?
Is what the new estimate is with transport.
Okay, okay.
That's three more people, that's plus an additional three more people.
But just to, that's for the additional three people that you have right there on line 50.
So, so the 438,219, that's with nine, 10, 11 staff.
And Delta?
No.
No, because we don't bill them for any portion of Delta, they pay their own. So the 438,219 is with 11 staff. The 471,761, that's at 14 staff. No, 13 staff, 13 staff.
13 staff.
Because we would have removed the utility, turned it into a full, and then you still have the chief. So that's four per shift, three shifts.
13.
12, 13, plus the chief. Yep.
So, so for the Benton folks, what I was trying to get at was a number, if we were paying the 335 now, right? Hold that other thought for a minute. And then the 98,000 that we pay for Delta, right? We're at 433.
Yeah.
Okay? The numbers look scary, but I think if you look back at just overall, here's Kathy, what we would have been paying, right? We're pretty close, we're almost identical to the 438 number. And not that far from the 471. I don't know that it makes sense to add three people, other than to get at what your requirement is with two in, two out. That's what you're trying to accomplish there, right Travis?
Yes, yeah.
And so that's why the, the net new three people?
Yes.
Okay. So that's there for safety and for compliance and for a lot of different reasons.
Yep.
And, but I don't know that it makes sense to add them if you're not really seriously thinking about transport, because there's benefits to go in that direction, right? That you can't, you can't realize if you're not doing transport.
That's correct. So, and I think, so the place, where we're at right now, the chief and I, is that if we're going to go any further with this, we need some direction. And I think, and I don't necessarily want to speak on behalf of the council, but I've spoken to the council enough and spoken to some of the Benton Select people enough over the years, is I think we really need to get to a point where we've had a decision made so that we know which way we go going forward. Because I can put all, I can put 100 different budgets together for you for December 1. Travis can do it, I can do it. But what is that going to look like? What are we going to do? And what collectively do you all want done to go forward? I think that's where we're at.
Tim, I got something.
Yeah.
A couple of things I want to mention. I know that Michelle, I think, just hit the nail on the head. What direction do we want to go on? I mentioned it before, other council meetings, that this has been one of the most contentious discussion items in our town since I've retired from the military in 2018 and moved back home. Seems like it always comes up. That being said, I'm neither nor, or neither for or against transport service. I'm data driven. I want to know what the data tells us. I did some research since I knew we were going to do this. I believe it is our best interest of the town to spend some money on a EMS feasibility study, similar to what Turner did in 2023. They spent 73,000, I think, and get all the data. I mean, we can, like you just, I'm getting confused sitting here and listening to the numbers. We're going to ask our residents to vote on this. I don't even have Delta's numbers. I mean, we're comparing apples to oranges right now. That makes somewhat sense to me, but where's the ambulance revenue? How do we come up with those numbers? Not for me, but for our residents. If we're going to have a town meeting and we're going to throw this out there, it should be, I think it should be self-explanating. What would that, what would that feasibility study cover? Well, we're talking about different things. Billing, capital costs, all the different things. We're talking about a potentially new fire station, what's that going to cost? The whole, the call volume from around the area. Also, we could throw in there how we're going to work around, you know, throughout the communities. We got Waterville, Winslow, Oakland, Albion, Clinton, you know? How, how would all that work? There are, there are companies out there that specifically do EMS feasibility studies that look at everything from the Delta's perspective and what we're looking at and what the numbers are. And I think the cost of that for us is probably, we look at it, you know, and, and I look, it can be anywhere, depending on what we ask, 35,000 to 100,000 for EMS feasibility study. That's half the cost of what we're paying Delta already. And we're looking at the long-term impact of our community for years to come.
So, just before you get too far ahead of yourself, we, we gave a look.
I'm not getting ahead of myself.
Well, no, I just, you're confused.
I'm not confused.
Well, like, the way it's being explained is confusing. We have a current budget level with current staffing at 10 people plus chief, okay? What we've showed for numbers is our current staffing level, our total fire department budget, plus our Delta budget.
Yeah.
Okay? Right now it's separate, because Benton gets billed separately, Fairfield gets billed separately. It's in our budget separately. It's a different article.
I understand.
Okay? So I was opposed, very adamantly opposed, to hiring three new staff. We put it in as a separate article, let the town vote on it, not because they don't want to get compliant, it was more on how do we fund it? Well, we voted it through, we're there now, we, we funded it, it's already there. Now to get to full compliance, we need to hire two more people to get to 12. It's basically two and a half in cost.
I understand all that, Tim.
Okay. So the only piece that you're really looking at, what does it cost to run that department without transport service? And if you add in, so you're, you're asking, how do we determine the revenue piece on transport? I can tell you how you got to that. Roughly, they currently bill 1.2 million for the two municipalities. They're trying to estimate 40% in collectibles. That's where you're getting your 480, 500,000 in revenue. That's it. We're currently with projected costs, Delta told us 55 to 60 per capita. Between the two towns, it's going to be 507,000 at a 55 level. Okay? If we estimate a revenue of a half a million, you're no longer spending 507,000.
I understand all that, Tim. We've had these conversations.
So what's the feasibility study for, Kevin? We, we know what our costs are. We already know the exact cost to run our department. We know what it's going to cost to have Delta. What we don't know, the only unknown, is the true billables. We don't budget for the true billables. We budget for 40% of it, so that we're not ever overestimating revenue. It's an offset. To get to the three additional people that we want to staff to get to four people per department, it's going to cost us 353,000.
Are we?
We're currently paying Delta 507,000.
I understand that. And I, I understand too, that Delta has gone up over, I got the number here, 267% in the past couple of years. I get that. I did all the numbers. I get what the numbers are. I'm not getting ahead of myself. What I'm getting at is, what do we present to our residents of this town where we're coming up with this money? I understand that. I understand what Michelle just put up there, whatever the, I may understand that, but it seems like there is missing data.
You would not present it that way, right?
No.
We would, we would have, absolutely have to polish it, right? And we would have to polish it so that everybody sitting here understands the same thing.
Yes.
Which I don't think we do right now, right? Because there's different, when you do a scenario-based exercise, right, to try to get people to think about, is, is it feasible to add two and a half or three staff and not do transport? What does that look like? Is it, okay, well, what if we did transport and we, we realized some revenue? What does that look like? Well, it looks a lot better than the first scenario, I can tell you that, just by the numbers I saw.
Right.
So, some of it is going to be a speculatory thing. Some of it's going to be based on what you're trying to get at is, what can we expect to see as a town when we look around at our, our sister towns, right? What, what can we expect to see in experience, based on what we have for a volume now and, and how it has obviously been going over the last five years, right?
We, we know what our costs are going to be next year, right? We already, we have our contract, we've got our insurance, we know what it's going to cost. We know what Delta has projected our cost to be for, for that savings. We can come up with a flat number. That's, that's what we're looking at, okay? And then we look at, do we transport, do we not transport? If we want to get to compliance, Michelle's given you a scenario. This is what it's going to cost to add two personnel, not transport, still have Delta's costs, there's a finite number. Boom. This is what it's going to look like if we get to full staff.
I understand that, Tim.
So, so I don't understand where the confusion is, because we're going to save money.
I'm not saying, I'm, I'm not saying there's confusion. Like I said at the very beginning, I'm neither for nor against. I want to see the data. I want to see the data. Where is the data coming from?
We can present that, exactly. We just need to.
Okay, maybe we don't need a feasibility study, but we need to do a lot more research and pulling this data before we just say, let's go for it.
Michelle's first, her hands up.
Go ahead, Michelle, please.
Not, I don't want to interrupt you, but I also want to make sure we did a feasibility study.
Yeah, I was going to say that. I was going to mention that.
So the audit that we talk about, that is a feasibility study. It started, we hired a company in '23. It was funded 25% by the town of Benton, 75% by the town of Fairfield. It was done by Municipal Resources, Inc.
Oh. I will just say that this goes back to one of my points, that one of our prior council meetings, having the information before we come, this would have been good to know. I wouldn't have had to research all this and wonder where all the data is coming from. That might answer every question I have right there.
Kevin, it's on our website.
There's a thousand things on the website.
Like for a building and the firefighter in '23.
Then why didn't?
It's on our website already.
Then why didn't we say, okay, for this meeting, reference this? Why didn't, why didn't we have the courtesy to say, reference this feasibility study that, okay, that's probably exactly what I and probably our residents are looking for.
Well, that's why it's a discussion and a workshop, so that we can make sure we bring these things out. They're going to be, I expect to have a lot more questions, but when, when we're talking about actual stats, we, we can get those. This is quick preliminary.
And I understand all those.
Okay. No, this is just quick preliminary stuff. I don't, I, I don't want to throw a lot of confusion out. We can get, the only thing that we can't give is estimated revenue when you start billing for Delta. That's the only thing, that's the only unknown variable, and you have to put it at a low percentage and hope for the best. You don't want to, you don't want to budget high and get reimbursed low, you're not going to make that revenue up. You want to budget low, and if extra comes in.
Is it, in that study, does it talk about what we do when we become understaffed? Where are we going to get mutual aid from? Are we going to tap into Delta? Are we going to pay, there's conversations about paying Delta? Is that information in there?
That would be mutual aid agreements that, that would.
Which went back to my other question, what it's in the mutual aid agreements, and then when do they get updated? Again, because I didn't know this was out there. It might have been on the website. It might have been on the website. I don't scour the website every day looking for it.
And Delta's been.
Pardon me?
A lot of information. And Delta's been extremely transparent with all their call data within the last couple of years. So, so we have that data available. How many, you know, how many times they come, how many times they transport, what their billables are, what their collection rate is. We have all that data.
So, I guess, the feasibility study, to me, was compiling everything that we're talking about, not expecting our townspeople to do it and our budget people to do it, to say, hey, here's everything, tell us what you think. If it's already there, then I'm good with that.
So, and I'm going to apologize because we had, we had a long, lengthy meeting this year where we went through this, and they did it last year, and I brought it up again this year. It was before you, you came on, but in retrospect, I'm assuming Benton knows now, and obviously knowing they didn't, or some of, some of the select person might have been when the feasibility study first came out, they may have been aware, and most of them probably not. So, that's what these discussions are for. That's why we've got this workshop. So, not, I'm not downplaying it. It's information that's needed, how do we get to that? But when it comes down to bottom-line dollars, we can get a real close estimate. Just the $507,000 that we're paying for Delta service, it's going to offset the cost of the staff.
Tim, I get it. I look at all these numbers, and as you know, I scrub all these numbers and I look at it. I get it. I, I did all the averages, the five-year averages and all that. The numbers, the information that was presented to me for tonight's meeting, it makes perfect sense. But there's information as a councilman that I'm missing, which is probably in that report. I wish we would have had it beforehand. I probably would have looked, and I wouldn't have been so boisterous about it. Okay, here is this, let's reference this. We can do that, and that was my point.
Yeah.
But again, that's why. It was necessary in '23.
That's why this workshop is here, is a discussion. We're, we're trying to gauge the direction that we want to go. That is information we need to collect, get out to, to the 10 people sitting here, this party, so that we can present it in a, in a better manner to, to both towns, citizens, because ultimately, they have to vote on it. And we have to have our i's dotted and t's crossed, which obviously, this is just a rough draft. It's trying to give us some basic information on, do we pursue this? Is it worth it? Or are we happy and comfortable spending what, with the services we have? And, and the unknowns of who pulls out and what happens to our per capita expenses. We don't have control of that. So, my whole point, from my perspective, is we do know what our costs are going to be to retain that service. We do know where we'd like to get to be compliant for, for our four-person staffing. And for me personally, it, it's already an offset just by the cost of what we pay Delta to what it would cost to purchase an ambulance and hire two additional staff. The rest is income. And the unknown piece is, what is that revenue piece? And I don't know. So, so some other questions for, for residents, Benton and Fairfield, that I've gotten, what happens if I have a transport and I, I get a bill and I can't pay it? Those are things that we, we have to figure out. What happens to those uncollectibles, which we, we read about with Waterville and Winslow? And, and those are pieces that we have to ask, get better information. Travis is going to be able to pull that for us.
And that's what I was, that's what a feasibility study does. It gives you all those data points for that, that type of information, what we can and can't do. Is it in there? Again, I don't know.
It, it is. And again, I, we just went through it a few months ago, so I, I forgot that you weren't there. But again, Benton wasn't there, so that is something.
Even Delta's annual report, they include a lot of that information.
Yeah.
But it, it's a great question. I just, I don't want everybody to get overwhelmed with, with the numbers that aren't finite. But, I mean, basically, we're looking at three things. Do we continue with the current staffing level and what Delta's charging? Do we hire that additional staff to get to compliance with the audit? And what's that going to cost in keep Delta at the current staffing level? Or do we get to the staffing level where we want to be for compliance and go to a transport service?
I feel, based off of the people in our community that I talked to, and I would, I would venture to say, us as a council agree that we would be foolish not to move for, have the town manager, look, and Travis, look at these numbers using that study and presenting us with the data and the numbers so that we can, we can discuss it. I think that's the direction that, that we ask the town manager to take, is let's press forward and, and let's look at it, and we'll make the decisions based off of everything that's in there, you know?
So, we just need to polish and refine those numbers so they're more concrete on our controlled costs, come back with a, with a presentation using the feasibility study and whatever questions any councilman or selectman may have.
I just wanted to say something. Well, that study there, some of us counselors were interviewed by that organization about that study. So, we were, some of us were interviewed, ideas and things like that.
That's, that's why I'm so packed. I wasn't there. I wouldn't have afforded this information.
That even talks about the building in there, too.
That's, that's what I was asking.
And so, it's been always referenced as the audit in all our meetings, the audit, but that's on us if you.
I've heard that reference all the time, but I'm like, okay, we had an audit, I'm not.
So, what was done? It was always done, we assumed.
Yeah.
We assumed.
Michelle, Kevin needs a hard copy.
Yeah, I will make sure.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Does anybody from Benton also?
Need a hard copy?
I would like one.
Hard copy. We can get them in.
I think that's key. With that information and what we're talking about, I think it's key, in my opinion, to move forward to something that we can present our residents because we're going to have to vote on it.
Yes.
And we're going to probably have a meeting, public hearing, whatever we want to, you know, before we put it as a referendum vote, and you know how that's going to go.
Yeah. No, I, I 100% agree. It's very important for us to get.
Transparent as possible.
Transparent, valid, factual information, and the utmost close to a specific number that we can. But again, that unknown variable is going to be, we don't currently transport, we don't currently bill. That first initial number is going to be an estimate, and, and we've asked them to be conservative, and that's the approach we have to take.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm just going to refrain from asking any more questions until I read that, because they might already be answered.
No, but, but again, I think we're all going to hear from our constituents. They do have questions. Like I said, I've been asked, you know, well, what happens if I get a bill and I can't pay it? Are they going to put a lien on my property? You know, those are questions that, that need to be answered. Those are the fear things that, that people worry about, you know? Right now, Delta bills, they're not going after my house. They're, they're going to put a medical on my credit report, but they're not going to take my house.
And I, I've been asked, who's going to be doing the billing? Who is going to be my source to go to when I'm dealing with billing?
That's, it's an important.
So, I'll read the report. I think in the meantime, we press forward.
Okay. Michelle?
That's all I have. Thank you for.
So, those, those questions are, are valid and they're necessary ones to ask. The position of where the chief and I are at at this point is, it takes an awful lot of time for us to do this research and put this all together for you. And what we, we don't want to do it if it's going to be a waste of time. Nobody has time to put together five different budgets for you, and we've talked to a contractor for billing and, and all of those pieces. Because one of the pieces I did have Travis, Chief Larry, start working on was, okay, so if they told you today they wanted to do ambulance transport, what are all of the things that we need to do before it ever even gets here? Right? So, those are the pieces that we're, and we know what a lot of them are, but every time we have a conversation, we think, oh, well, we should check this, or, oh, we should check that. Right? So, in a municipality, a lien does not go on people's properties for outstanding ambulance bills. Typically, it is they bill your insurance, whatever your insurance doesn't pay, they bill you. If you don't pay, that's what gets written off. But that is definitely a process that would have to be worked through in a conversation you would have to have. Usually, you have a billing company that they make money if you make money. That's how they get paid. So, there are all of those pieces and components to go with that. We could put you, you would put that service out to bid, or you would definitely shop for the best service. There are all these things that need to be done. And if this is something that these two communities want to do, we need time to put that together. And that's, that's where we were at for this evening's meeting, is that we just, we need to know what kind of direction we should be going in.
I think you were going at it very logically. It's just there's a lot of.
There's a lot of.
So, if I was going to explain it to a group, right, I would probably have made the same kind of steps, right?
Can we get that mic a little closer?
Sorry.
Thanks, Chad.
Yep. I forgot to tell you, God's speech.
I guess so.
Mr. Oz.
My God. So, but it would seem to me also that in order to get everybody to understand it and get buy-in from the two boards, that it might be easier to tease out what kind of questions are we asking, right? Because then, so if the first question is, let's assume we agree on the, get, get in sync with what the budget should have been, right? That's one question. The second question might be, let's make sure that Travis's team is compliant and safe when they do their job, right? So, that's the three or two and a half staff member, right? We can answer that question, right? With or without transport. So, maybe what we ought to do is come up with the key questions, and then you build the numbers based on those, answering those two.
Questions.
Those few questions. There, there isn't that many questions, right?
No, no.
That, that's just a thought I had as I was sitting here, because I was trying to, I can see exactly what you were doing. You were trying to answer all of those questions with all of the scenarios.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's why we said, I'm not giving this to you in a hard copy right now, because it's not ready for that. So, could we then maybe, I mean, not to push you into that whole next step thing, but that is the next piece that's coming up. I think it would be very helpful, as we work through all of this data, if you folks had questions that you knew you needed answers to, could we get you to send them to me or to Travis? And that way, we know, we can specifically answer those questions that way. And what I would propose is, is that we would get that worked up for you, get it to you to review, make sure everybody understands it before it ever became a public document anyway.
I'm wondering if we know what the questions are right now.
I think we do.
Right? I think, you know, first, there's the reconciliation here in the discrepancy of what Benton has and hasn't been paying, right? That, that's something we have to take back, come back to you with. I think the second question is how we, how do we get, never mind, setting aside the transport question, how do we get the team over here compliant and staffing, right? I think that's the second question. And then from there, it's, it's, you've already answered a lot of it, right? So, where's the money for the second ambulance coming? Well, it's coming out of this capital budget, right? That we've already funded. Right? So, we've kind of answered that question.
Then you have your comparative questions. What is the cost of the, the staffing and the ambulance together?
Yep.
What is the cost difference between, for both towns, based on the projected new, new amount versus where we are now? What's that difference? And then lastly is the total cost, which I still see it up on the screen. If we're paying $505,000 for Delta, how much will it cost us?
Sure.
In the long run, so.
No doubt about it, it's a scary number when you see it, right?
When you see billion, yeah, a million dollars, you know? But then you're looking at, and, and it was all answered there on, on your work. And I, I agree with Robin. You've got the, you've answered the questions, but they need to be written out so people know what we're looking at.
Right. Needs to be a report, essentially. You're going to have your IQs basically on it to help people in the community.
And how long?
And Kevin's.
How long is going to, going to take us to get there?
Right.
To the next level? We don't want to jump in it. We want to just take the baby steps. Answer the question, get the questions.
If we can just get past, you know, the first question, which is, how do we make him whole? Right? The rest of it is going to be about financially, what makes sense? Where do we want to be?
Right. And, and another question is, are we expected to make a profit when we do transport? And people need to hear us say no. We expect to break even.
If we can.
We got to give it time to get all this, all this information, data to present it to our residents, because they don't, right now, tomorrow, it's going to be flooded through the Facebook world.
It's part of the budget process, right? We're there, we're, we're already there for, for both towns. These are the numbers we need to know. I, I think, I'd like to do around the table on, I mean, what Robin had just said and Steph, you know, first of all, reconciliation, what we, what we currently stand, how do we get there? Out of Benton field, are we on the right level? Are we good to update that, you know, that, that contract, that in our town contract? And then, second question will be the staffing level. So, how do we get to the audit compliance level so that our, our people are safe? And then the, the third question, obviously, is, do we pursue going to a transport service? And what are those numbers? How do they look using the feasibility study, using the questions that we have? So, I mean, I think we've got some issues we should probably try to get back to within a month, and, and that way, it hits our fiscal cycle July 1. A lot of things need to be done, but it gives, if we, if we can act on it within a month, because we know the questions, do we have time to present a package that's understandable? Not, not only to the community, to us, obviously, even us sitting here, we don't all get it. So, the numbers are there. It's, it's just how do you put them so that everybody understands them?
And I think people want to know, how, how will we do the budgets, the billings? What will that look like? That kind of thing.
Kathy? I just have two things. They, again, they may be in the feasibility study or may not be. Have we discussed regionalization or mutual aid with what we would have in Fairfield? And I didn't want to wait and email that question, because if it's something that Travis can already start working on, then so be it, because I think that's a key piece that a lot of residents around our communities, Winslow, Waterville, whatever, that they would want to know as well. You know, if we're, if we're tapped out, what is that resource going to be? And the other question I had would be hypothetical, and I hate hypotheticals, and I'm not too smart on, on Delta's business model. I have looked at their numbers, but hypothetically, what if they came back? I mean, have we ever asked for a fixed-price contract? I dealt with fixed-price contracts in the military all the time. Have we asked for that? Why can't we be locked in at $30 a, a person for the next five years to allow us to, to budget? Why is it continuing to go up so high?
Operational expenses.
That's the.
That's what it is. I think it's operational expenses.
Operational expenses, and then also, right, the, the dynamic of what is, what are all Operational expenses, and then also, right, the dynamic of what is, what are all the surrounding towns going to do? Who do you have for customers?
Which, exactly, which would tie into the regionalization or the mutual aid.
So we have asked that, and it's been presented to us. Unfortunately, it's just reimbursement rates, unbillables, there's so many variables through COVID, getting updated with equipment that had sat for too long and not been replaced due to finances, selling buildings and now leasing them. Then there's so many variables that went into those expenses. We did ask for a fixed contract price. It's flat across the board for the whole service region, by per capita. They're not going to come down. They're never going to come down. So, and the more people that go their own way, it just throws higher costs on those left in that area. So, but valid, valid questions, I think these are stuff that we can write down, ask Chief Leary and Michelle to get that. I think we should probably meet in December, but at least let's give a direction on which way we want to go right now. Let's go around the table. Kevin, do you have any other questions other than mutual aid and that fixed-price contract that you're going to look at the feasibility study? We'll get you that copy. I would direct all questions directly to Travis and Michelle, and let's try to meet again in probably December before that budget meeting, and give exact direction when we have, you know, exact costs or close to exact costs, and see where we want to go.
I don't have any other questions. I need to do more research.
All right. Kathy, do you have any questions for chief or Michelle that need to be answered for Benton?
I think the only question I have right now is the fact that are we, as a group, looking at both options, and then we're going to come together as, to decide on what we're presenting to the, to our citizens? Or are we going to give the citizens the option of one or the other?
I think we would discuss our next steps on what direction we want to pursue, and get those numbers, and then we will present it to our citizens.
I think it's less confusing if we go forward with one option.
Yeah.
And I don't know what that is at the moment, but.
I don't think there's any clear option right now until we have exact costs and numbers. It can be more finite.
And I think, Kathy, you know, public hearings, when they're had and people attend, right? Those are the times when somebody's going to raise, well, what are their, what are the other options? Knowing the other options, you're able to discuss that a little bit. But the numbers presented, right, really do send us down a path. It's just hard to see when you're looking at that forest of trees, right?
Right. But I think it's best to, yes, it's nice to know there are, to be able to explain the other options, and then maybe when we come up with a positives on one or the other, it's the why we're not presenting the other. But we don't want to get too far into detail so that they start asking too many questions about why we didn't go the other way.
Sure. Agreed.
Councilor Tebow, any questions?
I just think it's important that we go back to the percentages that Benton will be responsible for, and make sure that those are part of the schematic when we have it done, and what ours is as well. We don't want to overlook that part. That's just a comment, not a question.
No, and I think we are, can I agree with Benton? We've already established 22.56% on the five-year average. We're good with continuing that on a five-year average, not under contract.
I think the five-year average makes sense, right? When you're trying to come up with a percentage.
Yeah.
It's going to be hard for everybody to understand and to swallow, but if you really looked at one year and tried to set it based on the one year, you might have an off-year for different reasons, right? And so five-year average is a lot, a lot fairer to both communities, I think, than looking at a one-year.
And if we are doing an annual workshop, say, December, we can discuss that, so that if they get out of whack, we're not waiting 10 or 12 years to sit down and have that discussion.
And I think probably the thing that people will ask and wonder about is, you know, how do we decide what is needed in the budget, right? And so I think as long as we're having those open dialogues, right, and both sides are represented, I don't see any reason why we can't work through it.
Okay. Robin, any addition that we need for Travis and Michelle?
The only thing that I would say is, I think December is probably too long.
Too far out?
Yeah. I would suggest, only because we've seen some stuff, we've got to go back and have some conversation. I think we can do that, so that we can at least bring back an answer, right, is to how we're going to handle that first piece, which is, how do we reconcile the differences?
Yeah.
And then I think we all need a refresh, just to Sean's, you know, Sean's point, you know, on the feasibility study, to look at the points. I think then we try to come back and answer the question about, I keep pointing at you because I think that's the most important answer, right? And whether or not we can get there collectively, if there's any concerns. So maybe just those, in an email, those numbers that just represent, how do we get?
The agreement.
How do we get Travis, Travis and his team compliant and safe, right, first? And then we can have that dialogue. I think we need to come back, because I think if we wait till December, we'll go into January.
Okay. What do you suggest? December's only five weeks.
I know.
So I'm trying more, the people that, we need to get that information, make sure we give them the time. We've got an election next week. We don't meet till November 19th.
Okay.
We've got a ton of committees going on as well.
Thanksgiving.
So, and then Thanksgiving's the following week.
Maybe it's the first, maybe we do two meetings in December.
All right. So, Michelle, you think we can find an early December date? We'll get what we've just discussed in questions to you, so we have something to report back. Maybe you can work on the reconciliation piece with Robin and Benton on our behalf, and that can get done before the meeting.
We can do, yeah, I can do a doodle poll, if you all are fine with that, or potential meeting dates. One question I have for you is the three days, well, not the 26th, but the 24th and the 25th, which is the Monday and Tuesday prior to Thanksgiving. Is that off the table for everybody? All right, so I will include that as well as some potential in the first week of December, and see if we can't find you another meeting.
Maybe stay away from Wednesday, but Monday and Tuesday.
Wednesday's not good. No, we've got to cook on Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, not Wednesday. The issue we have is, there's also several other committee meetings going on throughout the course of the next two months. So I'm just looking for dates, room availability, and that kind of stuff.
Oh, I'm sure.
I'll put some dates together for a doodle poll, and we'll get that out to everybody.
So we got potential of 24th, 25th, though, right? That gives us.
I mean, that's, I mean, those two days are open. Everybody else has kind of avoided the week of Thanksgiving.
Okay. So let's tentatively put that down, everybody. Clear your schedules, 24th, 25th. Michelle will send out a doodle poll, see what works for everybody.
If we have it on the 25th, I may have an issue of not being able to air it.
Okay. All right. So let me double-check with.
With Chad.
With Mr. Oz, and we'll.
Unsettling.
Go back behind that.
No, I think, I think we can do it in two meetings. Maybe, maybe we, maybe we need one, but.
Yeah, absolutely. Continue. Robin, anything to add?
No, everything has already been said.
All right. Peter?
I'm good.
John?
I'm good right now.
Dr. T?
I think there are a lot of good questions. I think we're moving forward. That's good.
Okay, how about Chief Leary? Anything for us?
No, no, I don't think so. I think we've got a lot to work with right now, and we'll just, you know, I will definitely work on the data portion and get some spreadsheets together and some visuals, so you guys can see that stuff, particularly for call data, or just to see all those numbers. It's good to have that out there, for sure.
Okay.
But, and also, I just want to, I feel bad in a way, and I've mentioned this to Michelle a couple times, I've never been to a council meeting or slept in a meeting in Benton, and feel free to ask me whenever, if my schedule allows, I don't mind coming. So my wife probably won't like it, but, you know, I'd be happy to, be happy to come anytime, you know, not just to talk about this, but whenever.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. So just a quick recap. We're going to have Michelle and Robin go over reconciliation. They can do that by electronic and bring that back for the next meeting. We'll have some numbers for staffing levels at current compliant level audit, and if we decide to go transport. In the meantime, if we get hard copies out of that survey, gives everybody enough two, three weeks to read it, ask more questions. Travis, the big question will be mutual aid. How does that work? The fixed-price contract, again, I, we can ask about it again, but I think it's been answered already prior to, not much we can control. And right now, tentatively, hold your schedule for November 24th, 25th.
Just throw out the spreadsheets, like what we had tonight, if you can shoot that to us, or as they're updated, it'd be nice to see. Those were some great numbers.
The one that we had on the screen, or the hard copy ones that you have?
The one we have on the screen.
Yes. Like I said, we need to.
Clean it up.
Polish. That needs to be cleaned up.
We understand it better, though, so.
Yes. Yes. And that way, and it'll help. Yep. Yes, we will, as soon as we have that.
Thank you.
All right. I think this was real productive. Thank you, everybody, for coming, overdue, and I really appreciate it. Real good conversation, so. Bring more questions.
I want to thank our compas across the river being here.[1762.75]